Good morning. Hey, good morning, everybody. It's the rain. I'm just taking note of who's not listening to me so I can make them talk.
Good morning, everyone. If we can please quiet down for debating.
For all of you who's there at the first two times, I'm going to ask you to come up and give a seance on what's happened today at the at the diaz. So. Good morning. Today is October fourteenth. This is twenty twenty-five. It's nine AM. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley is absent. Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer is absent.
Okay, three members present, two absent. We'll go ahead and. Do all please rise for invocation from Pastor Tyler Jones, One of the Church. Morning Pastor.
Hi, your head's with me, Father. We just thank you for this board. We thank you, God, for every person in attendance of this meeting. I pray, God, that you would give them peace and clarity as they navigate what's on the agenda. And, Father, I pray that you would just be that they would be reminded of that you're faithful and that you are for Kings County and that you love love them. In Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, at this time, we're going to move right on into the County Service Award presentation from Carolyn Leece. Morning Carolyn.
Good morning, Chairman. Members of the board, Carolyn Leece, Human Resources Director. I am here to present the county's service awards. Today, we gather to recognize the exceptional contributions of employees from Behavioral Health, Community Development Agency, Department of Child Support Services, District Attorney's Office, Fire Department, Human Resources, Information Technology, Library, and the Public Works Department. Public service is more than a job. It's a calling that reflects a profound commitment to improving the lives of the community members. Every day, dedicated individuals bring their skills, time, and passion to ensure the well-being of and progress of Kings County. To honor this commitment, we have the Kings County Service Awards Program, which was established in nineteen seventy-seven, which celebrates the invaluable contributions of our employees. This program acknowledges full-time service, presenting awards after five years of continuous employment, and then in five years increments thereafter. It's a chance to publicly recognize not just the length of service, but quality of service our workforce provides, reinforcing the significance of their efforts. Each recipient will receive a certificate highlighting their years of dedicated service. For those highlighting ten years or more of service, they will have an option to select an award, which has already been sent to them for either cash or commemorative mememento. Notifications for these selections have been sent to eligible employees, and Human Resources will reach out to these recipients when they are received. As we proceed, I will present the awardees by department. Please hold your applause until the end of each department when they are called. When your name is called, please come forward to receive your certificate and have your photo taken. Afterward, kindly remain in the well for a group picture with your department's recipients. All right, we're going to begin again with Behavioral Health Department. Five-year recipients are Michelle Ash. Ashley Bennett. Danielle McFadden. Annie Puga Yang. And last for five years is Kaylee Williams. For fifteen years, we have Desiree Low. And also for fifteen years, we have Amanda Verhage. So if we can get a full picture for the department and also, Chrissy, did you want to come on down for this photo? Congratulations. Next up, we have Community Development. For twenty-five years, we have Chuck Kenny.
So Chuck began his career when he was hired in the planning department as a building and planning aide on August twelfth, nineteen ninety-nine. Chuck was quickly promoted to Planner One in December of the same year, and he continued to excel in department as he quickly promoted through the Planner Series, promoting to Planner Two in two thousand one, Planner Three in two thousand three, and Planner Four in two thousand seven. Chuck was then promoted to Deputy Director of Planning in two thousand ten and ultimately promoted to Director of Community Development, and has been in the position since June of twenty twenty-one. Over the years, Chuck has been instrumental in searching millions of dollars in grant funding and funded many projects countywide. Chuck has been the agency expert in managing the grant loan programs for the counties under self-guidance and initiatives. Chuck also serves on various committees, including the Planning Commission, LAFCO Ag Advisory Committee, makes Kings River GSA. Chuck is known for being highly detailed-oriented and is often called upon for assistance from various departments and agencies due to the years of experience and knowledge that he brings to the table. Chuck is a kind person who puts the team first and always goes the extra mile. Throughout the years, he has been a driving force to the success of Community Development Department. A little fun fact about Chuck, you'll often see him in a self-imposed uniform, which is includes khaki pants, a long white sleeve shirt, and if you look closely, often it's a Disney-themed tie. Congratulations, Chucks, on your years of services.
Yeah, but did you get a picture? Oh, you already got one of them? Okay. So we have one more for Community Development, twenty-five years. I'm going to ask Chuck to come up to the podium for this one. And this one is for Darren Vertigal.
Darren Vertigal started with the county back in November of nineteen ninety-nine as a Building Inspector One. Since starting with the Planning Department, which later transitioned to the Community Development Agency, Darren has been able to progress through the steps of the Building Inspector and became the county's building official in two thousand and nine. He has helped the Community Development Agency in so many ways, it's impossible to list them all, but I believe the most important way is how he has made the Community Development Agency a welcoming environment, not just for the employees within our department, but also for our public. As he has helped, as he helps them to easily understand the many rules associated with construction and helps them anytime that they have questions. I've had the pleasure of working with Darren for the majority of my career here at the county, and I truly value his work ethic and friendship. Please help me congratulate him on achieving twenty-five years of service with the county.
For the next department, we have the Department of Child Support Services. For five years, we have Sandy Borja Olivera.
That's the hint.
Next up for five years, we have Marie Waite. Ten years, we have Patricia Medina. All right. For fifteen years, Jennifer Espia. Fifteen years, Luc Splinter. Twenty years, we have Betty Ramos. And twenty-five years, we have Kimberly Bassett. And so that concludes for Department of Child Support Services. Did you want the rest of your department to come up for a photo op? Awesome. Come on up. Need to get one like this. No, I didn't know that.
And Carolyn, I just want to add, we have some shy employees that we will be recognizing this afternoon, because we do have some longevity that we want to make sure that we recognize within our team.
All right, thank you. The next department is the District Attorney's Office. Five years, Olivia Mize. And that concludes for the District Attorney's Office. So a round of applause for the District Attorney's Office. For the Fire Department, we have a pretty long list here, guys, so bear with me. So we have Fire, Isaac Frick-Fricky. I probably messed up his name. Fricky, I didn't get it right. Okay, five years. Five years, Jordan Goforth. Five years, Christopher Hospital. Five years, Martin Vasquez. Ten years, Dario Bravo. Ten years for Stephanie Stavantes. Ten years, Ryan Delgado. Ten years, Derek Dominguez. Ten years, Andrew Twifford. Ten years, John Wilson II. Fifteen years, Antonio Dutra. And fifteen years for Anthony Gonzalez. Twenty years, we have Thomas Allen. Gary Dutra is also twenty years, as well as, but he is at the Garrett Fire, so he will not be with us today. Kevin Menez, twenty years. Manuel De Font, twenty-five years. He too is also at the Garrett Fire and won't be with us today. Travis Nunes, twenty-five years. Daniel Pereira, twenty-five years. All right. If I can invite Blake Adney up.
Good morning, Blake Adney, Battalion Chief of the Kings County Fire Department. I just put together some couple of things real quick, especially about Aaron Pereira. So twenty-five years ago, Aaron was hired as a fire apparatus engineer and has worked his way through the rank of Fire Captain, currently holding the position of Battalion Chief. Over the past twenty-five years, Aaron has been a compassionate mentor and strong leader for his fellow firefighters. Additionally, Aaron is our dispatch liaison and head of our Communications Committee, as well as plays a lead role in our Critical Incident Stress Management Team. In his spare time, Aaron gives back and teaches to the COS Fire Academy. Chief Pereira is currently assigned to Battalion Chief of Operations over A-Shift, and we'd like to thank you for your award.
Also, for twenty-five years, we have Gabriel Sumaya.
Just mentioned a few quick words about Gabe here. Twenty-five years ago, Gabe was hired as a fire apparatus engineer. He's currently our most senior engineer in our staff. Over the past twenty-five years, Gabe has shown unwavering commitment to our agency by training and sharing real-world advice to every single one of our firefighters, the kind of stuff you can't teach in books. Engineer Sumaya is currently assigned to our Corcoran Station eleven on A-Shift, and congratulations on your award.
And then for thirty years, we have retired Fire Captain Matthew Scott. And that concludes for the Fire Department. So if we could get a round of applause and have everybody in the well for a photo. Next up, we have the Human Resources Department. Ten years, Eva Perez. Come on down, HR.
Yeah, exactly.
And that concludes for HR. Thank you. Next up, we have the Information Technology Department. Alfred Gomez, five years. Evan Jones, five years.
Glad you didn't shave this morning.
Five years, Teresa Ramirez. Five years, Brian Sapien.
Don't breathe.
Ten years, Christopher Verhage. Twenty years, Anthony Walecki. Twenty-five years, Angela Ameth. And John will be speaking on behalf of Angela.
All right, Angela Ameth actually has twenty-six years of service as of September twenty-seventh. Angela was hired September twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-nine as a legal clerk one with the District Attorney's Office. Her starting wage was eight dollars fifty-six cents. That was money back in the day, you young ones. She was promoted to a legal clerk two in two thousand one, then to a legal secretary in two thousand seven, all within the District Attorney's Office. From there, Angela was promoted to Executive Secretary in the IT Department on, or in November of two thousand thirteen. Angela does all the usual duties of an Executive Secretary, but she also backs up our account clerk and handles all the payroll in IT, purchasing, and central services. Angela also handles the IT contract renewals for IT in most county departments. Angela is always ready to help lost visitors to our campus. You'll see her pop out of the thing, go, you look lost. And they can't miss her voice saying, you look lost. She sees them wandering by our offices trying to make sense of the directions. Angela is quite literally the glue that keeps the department humming. Thank you for your service and dedication to IT and the county.
And for twenty-five years, we have Dave Schubert. He's not with us here today, so that concludes for Information Technology. So if we can go ahead and have John come down into the well. Thank you, Information Technology Department. Next up, we have the Library. Ten years, Joyce Bailey. Next up for ten, ten years for the Library is Brian Martin. And twenty years, we have Sherman Lee, and that concludes for the Library. Tanya is going to come up and join in the well for a photo. Congratulations, Joyce. All right, next up is the Public Works Department. Five years, Jess Gonzalez. Five years, Sean Lawrence. Ten years, Go Inquist. Ten years, Conception Martinez. Fifteen years, Rodell Quintero. Twenty years, Anthony Atolano. Twenty years, Mel Laningham. And twenty years, Robert Senna. That concludes for the, for the Public Works Department, sorry. And that concludes the presentation for today. Thank you.
I would imagine Public Works is fixing the leaky roofs and the flood drains and all that good stuff. At this time, we'll move into item number three, Unscheduled Apairances. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on items of interest within the board jurisdiction and which are not already on the agenda. The board will not answer questions impromptu, and concerns or complaints will be referred to the appropriate staff. For items which are not on the agenda, members of the public will be provided with an opportunity to address the board on, as each item is brought up for discussion. Speakers are limited to their comments, not more than two minutes. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no written correspondence. I do have a speaker card, Red Fidiassi.
One, Red. How are you today?
I'm good. Good morning. My name is Red Fidiassi, and I am speaking as a representative of Valley Voices. Today, I would like to address item E, Administration, in the Consent Calendar. This item is asking the board to consider adopting a resolution opposing Proposition Fifty. The proposed resolution says, this board expresses its strong opposition to Proposition Fifty due to the dangerous precedent the measure will set by usurping constitutional protections that ultimately deny the will of the people to utilize independent redistricting commissions to draw fair, nonpartisan, and equity-driven district lines. First off, Proposition Fifty sets a precedent that California government will continue to support the people and their wishes by abiding by their choices. In my opinion, that's not dangerous. That's how the government is supposed to work. Secondly, Proposition Fifty gives a voice to the will of the voters by asking to make the decision instead of the government enacting whatever it pleases, like the state of Texas has. The changing of the district lines goes into effect in twenty twenty-six till twenty thirty, where the drawing of the congressional lines goes back under the jurisdiction of the independent redistricting commissions. Valley Voices, as always, remains neutral, focusing on education rather than attempting to sway voters. We encourage the board to remember that you don't have to take a side, and that regardless of your personal beliefs, your responsibilities to this board are to remain nonpartisan. Local governments should be focusing on improving residents' quality of life, not taking partisan positions on statewide ballot measures. We urge you to reconsider this resolution, stay neutral, and allow voters to make their own informed decisions at the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that we have for unscheduled.
Anybody in the audience have anything they want to say today? Seeing none, we'll move on to. Item. Four, Approval of the Minutes. Report at a closed session from regular meeting, October seventh, twenty twenty-five.
There was nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Item B, Approval of the Minute from Regular Meeting, October seventh, twenty twenty-five. By Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Neves. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on now to, oh. Two, three in favor, two absent. Was there any comments on those items in the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Consent Counter. All items listed on Consent Counter are to be considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. If a board member has a question, request additional, or request additional information, or wishes to comment on an item, the vote should not be taken up until after the questions have been addressed or comments haven't been made, and the public has had an opportunity to comment on the Consent Counter. It's the board's pleasure.
I do have a speaker for item E one.
E one. Always pull that and get it out of the way. And so we'll pull item E, and we'll vote on the Consent Counter as presented.
As amended.
As amended. Board's pleasure. Oh, do we have any comments from the public on that? Seeing none, I'll take the direction. As amended. We have motion by Supervisor Neves, second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Okay, three in favor, two absent. Item E, Administration, Consider Adopting a Resolution Opposing Proposition Fifty pertaining to Congressional Redistricting. Matthew Boyet.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Boyet, Deputy County Administrator Officer, Kings County Administration. So yeah, it's before your board here this morning for the consideration of a resolution to oppose Proposition Fifty, which on the opposing side is seen by, you know, government overreach and, you know, usurping the redistricting commission that is already in place, the fourteen-member citizen commission, and it being the district maps being redrawn for twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty by what the opposing side is saying is politicians and having the lawmakers draw the map rather than the, rather than the commission there. So there, you know, there's, the opposing side is saying that it's a, you know, misuse or waste of taxpayer funds to do so, and an attempt to gerrymander California toward, again, this is on the opposing side, they're, they're attempting to gerrymander it in the favor of a particular political party. And so they're saying that this is kind of a pendulum swing to the other way to address other gerrymandering effort setter, you know, said to be being done across other states. So with that, that concludes our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions in the audience?
I do have a speaker card from Kathleen Jorgensen.
Morning, Ms. Jorgensen.
Good morning, Kathleen Jorgensen. I am a constituent of Rusty Robinson's district. In fact, we, we share back fences.
Is he a good neighbor?
He doesn't bother me too much. I hate the big light. In my backyard, when I'm out by my pool at night, but, okay. Proposition Fifty, I don't not believe that this board being nonpartisan should be getting into the politics of our, of our state. This is something that is being voted on by the people, by the people. Let the people decide. Right now, I will tell you that I am scared to death for what's happening in my country. And if you guys aren't scared, I don't know what's wrong with you, because we're just about ready to lose our democracy. So let's let the people decide. One more thing, I find it very rich that a board, when we redistricted in twenty twenty, I went to every single redistricting meeting. I spoke. A lot of people spoke. We spoke in favor of one map, one map. No one ever spoke on any other map. And the last, just the last meeting, all of a sudden, poof, we found the map we like. So you elected officials, redistricted. So you elected officials, redistricted our county, and you didn't seem to mind. Now you don't want the people to decide? I think you need to think about it, and I think you need to take this and remember that this is nonpartisan, nonpartisan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the public? Anybody from the audience? Ms. Matthews? Mayor Matthews?
Hi, longtime attendee, first-time speaker. Um, I just want to thank you guys for bringing this forward and taking a position. I understand some of the opposition that you, you may be getting, um, but this is about big government, in my opinion, and this is, when you look at the local level, this is where this doesn't make sense. If you take out the two figureheads that are pushing this, um, which are very partisan, I don't think anybody would vote for this if you take out the partisan concept of it. Um, what this does on a local level is not good for anyone. Cities like Avonel will be redistricted into, uh, with San Jose, which doesn't make any sense at all. Um, cities like Clovis will be split into three districts. Cities like Lowdy will be split into three districts who have formerly been one district. Um, counties like San Joaquin County will be split into five. Uh, these cities and counties won't have fair representation. They, uh, think about the funding that they may or may not get from their congressional district. When you're split that small, you become insignificant to that congressperson. So what it means for a local, on a local level, um, is very much different than when you look at however you want to, to, to view it. Um, me personally, I don't like my state changing how we do things based off of another state as well. And I do want to say that I am speaking on my personal behalf and not my role that I have. So I just want to thank you guys.
Thank you. Any other comments? I have a comment. Uh, I wrote down some notes this morning. So the system we use currently often, the current, the system we use currently, after the census was set up, so we all have a voice. I know there's a lot of comparison about tech because of Texas, but we do not change our constitution because a state operates differently. Today is about our voters having a fair representation. And here we have a governor that refused to support Prop thirty-six, which was voted in by the people to get criminals off the street. And now he's willing to spend thirty, three hundred million dollars on a ballot initiative that penalizes people of a different party. This is just politics, which should not, which should infuriate all of us. I say we stick with what we have with independent commission that we do use after the back, change the boundaries, after the district changes by more than ten percent. If not, we lose four to six years of relationships and local representation. Our voice will be deleted, and we will lose our real voice we have worked so hard to get. This is politics by the governor and his party takes away our voice, and I urge my constituents to vote no on fifty. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, you know, in my opinion, Prop fifty usurps the will of the people. Uh, at the end of the day, it temporarily takes them away, and it reinstitutes its back later. So also, if you look on the ballot, it says this will cost the state a few million dollars. Last I checked, two hundred and fifty-one million dollars is not just a few million dollars. It also takes a lot of the power away from some of these smaller counties. So, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
No, and I, I'll make another comment. I know Ms. Matthews just came here from, uh, we just came back from our trip from Valley Voice trip to D C. And so we just changed administration from the Biden administration to the Trump administration. So, and we went from, uh, Obama to Trump, from Trump to Biden, to Biden to Trump. And so four years in office, you lose the first year of new administration, no matter if you're in Congress, Senate, Assembly, or, uh, President, Office of President. This year, we went back, and we knew that we wouldn't do anything but build relationships. And just imagine you do that with your local congressman. You have to spend, the first visit you have after election is just to introduce yourself and talk about your needs and concerns. The second year, you may get something done. Uh, one, one issue we had one time was with Congressman Doherty. We tried to introduce ourselves to all the congressmen in the Central Valley. His staff member had been working three hours. We followed up with, with our questions on our legislative platform. He had got a new, new congress, uh, a new staffer. So when you have a congressman that's established such as Congressman Costa, you build relationships, and you can call him and drop a hat or text him, and they, and they help you with your needs and concerns. So to change it to we have three congressmen that aren't from our area, that don't think like us, don't live like us, don't go to the pizza parlor, don't go to the back-end restaurant, don't go to the football games. It's extremely hard to have a voice. We have a voice today. Um, it may not be what everybody wants to have, but it's what we use to get things done. I know I went to, uh, the White House for four years under the Biden administration. I had a great relationship with their staff. Now I have a new administration. I have to build that relationship up. It takes years to do that. You have to throw your politics out the window and take care of your community, and that's what I do. And that's why I think this is so important. Because if we have someone from San Jose that wins an office and represents Avonel, they won't have a reputation. They will never be considered any good at all. Avonel also already feels like a redheaded stepchild, and feels that we don't take care of them. So we need to take care of our community, and I think relationships do that. So, uh, thank you for your time. What's, uh, board's pleasure?
Motion approved.
Motion by Supervisor Robinson?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Neves. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Okay, three in favor, one, two absent. Thank you, Matthew. Okay, we'll move on now to regular calendar, and we have Community Development Agency. Twenty-six-year veteran Chuck Kenny. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of board. Chuck Kenny, Community Development Agency. Um, coming before you today on an item, uh, concerning, uh, dairy permit fees. Uh, back in February of this year, the county was notified by the, uh, state of California that, uh, we were out of compliance with a portion of the monitoring program for the dairy element. Since then, uh, we have, uh, come before you a couple of times and, uh, been given authorization to move forward to hire a consultant to begin that work. That work is going to take approximately a year time. We have a number of dairies that have submitted and applications, and there are more wanting to submit applications as they're working to, uh, utilize grant funds to better improve their manure processing, uh, systems, uh, that, those were given out, uh, through the state. The result of this process has increased the cost to dairymen by approximately fifty-eight hundred dollars for the application fees of local costs, plus an additional three thousand for state costs. Um, this comes at a time when the dairy industry is hurting economically, um, and this has become a stress point for the dairy industry. And that is why staff is recommending that your board authorize the Community Development Agency to waive the application fees, which are greater than those for a dairy site plan review when processing applications for bovine dairy projects, effective for all applications which were submitted following the, uh, letter from the Attorney General in February, and are currently being reviewed together with those applications which are submitted while the county is in the process of bringing, uh, Kings County Dairy Element into compliance. Uh, this partial fee waiver, uh, would remain in effect until such time that the board supervisors rescinds the fee waiver following when the dairy element monitoring program is fully compliant. Um, I do want to just reiterate that this is not waiving the state's fees. Those are still additional fees that will be applicable to dairies, but, uh, this would definitely help them, uh, to be able to continue with the, the plans that they had previously been working on.
Thank you, Chuck. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I saw movement.
Oh.
I was like, I missed.
We have, we, I'm sorry, we have a motion by Supervisor Neves and a second by Supervisor Robinson. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinsons?
Three in favor, two absent. Sorry about that mistake. Uh, move on now to Public Works Department, and we have Mitchell. Good morning, Mitchell.
Chair. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with the Public Works Department. Uh, before your board this morning, requesting approval of a notice of completion, uh, for the project titled Fire Station Number Four Access Driveway. Uh, the notice of completion will provide notice to all parties involved that the work has been completed, allow us to record said document, and then release the retention payment, um, to the contractor. On June twenty-fourth of this year, the board approved the project, um, being awarded to J T Two, um, which do business as top companies, in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred. Uh, the purpose of the project was to construct a asphalt driveway connecting the back of Fire Station Number Four um, to the Ag Department warehouse parking lot just west of the fire station. Uh, this project, um, it came to be due to the need for access once high-speed rail starts the, uh, construction on the Houston, um, bridge. Um, so this would allow, uh, a fire, um, department staff and equipment to enter and access, uh, not being that much affected by the high-speed rail construction. Um, part of the project was the asphalt driveway, as well as an installation of a new sliding gate with an automatic opener. Uh, the project was funded through the money that was acquired for the high-speed rail, same funding being used for the remodel, uh, Fire Station Number Five in Armona. So we request that the board approves the notice of completion, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions from board? Motion by Supervisor Robinson. Any questions from the audience? No second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Supervisor Neves. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinsons?
Three in favor, two absent. So, uh, my question is, do you know when they're going to start construction on Houston?
Uh, we, just yesterday, uh, Public Works staff did the walkthrough for Hanford, Armona. Um, so once that gets finalized, once they finish the punchless items, uh, Houston, um, maybe by the end of this month.
Do you know how long it took to come from? It took over a year, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're looking at a year of inconvenience for those people that live out there, which hopefully we could have the bridge done at Houston at the same time we get the old pass done too, so.
We'll see. We'll work with High Speed Road to see what the timelines look like, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll move on now to board member announcements and reports. Uh, who wants to start? Supervisor Neves?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, attended the Hanford mural ribbon cutting on October eighth. A beautiful mural, uh, in, in downtown Hanford, uh, turned out very, very nice. Also attended the Fairfield Ends, uh, Suites ribbon cutting on the eighth. Marriott affiliated, uh, location has eighty-two rooms, a laundry, a gym, meeting rooms, and they serve breakfast every morning. So if you swing by there, you can get a waffle. Also attended the, uh, Lamoore College Agricultural Advisory Meeting held on October eighth. Uh, this newly formed, uh, Golden Eagles Aggies, um, is looking to create an agricultural-focused and educational classes for student success, um, that attend Lamoore College. On Friday, October tenth, the Stanford, uh, University Energy Program students visited Kings County to tour the solar developments. Fifty-five student class was able to, uh, see firsthand the energy production and the effect it has on local operations, and uh, Noel Tomlinson does an outstanding job, Chuck. Um, so whenever you, uh, see her, thank her from me and this board, uh, for her wisdom and knowledge and her ability to, uh, talk to those students, and I think she's even trying to talk a couple of them into becoming planners, so. Um, and then attended and, uh, staffed up the pour station at the, uh, October, uh, Hanford Oktoberfest on Saturday of the eleventh, held at, uh, Civic Park. Uh, that event benefits the Hanford Police K-9 Foundation. Um, and by news of print, uh, they said between five and six hundred people, and it was a nice crowd. Turned out very, very nice.
What'd you pour?
Coffee beer. Uh, coffee espresso.
Nice.
Um, and it was very sweet. And then we had also the other, uh, coffee. So we, um, innovated a little bit, so we would blend them. Um, so, but it was a coffee-flavored beer. That was more of a dessert-type beer, and it turned out very, very, very. And then, uh, last night, attended the Belton ribbon cutting, which is in the building that the mural is on. Um, and they are now in downtown Hanford after, uh, being at the, uh, Health Annex at the hospital. And so they're downtown Hanford and glad to see them in downtown and trying to make the, uh, world here better, huh?
But I see your lift moving.
Exactly. So they, they are right there. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I was like this week, but I did follow up with Mitchell on the traffic warrants on Fifteenth and Grangefill and Sixteenth and Grangefill. I don't think the traffic warrants have yet on Fifteenth and Grangefill met the four-way stop. Uh, they may before time, we'll see. And he's also looking in a little deeper on Sixteenth and Grangefill for me. Uh, also spoke to Deputy C A O, Matt Boyett, uh, about a hundred and one lights that they're going to be putting in. Uh, I think about ninety-five of those are going to be in Hanford. The other five are going to be in Armona. Uh, my involvement started with the Armona side, just because I need consistency on Fourteenth Avenue, uh, because it's still very dark over there. At any rate, they're going to be switched out to L E D lights shortly. I don't know the timeline. And, uh, and it's also going to include the five lights, uh, that were in question in Armona.
Very good. For myself, I was invited to the Big Brothers Big Sisters event, uh, called Ten Ten of Ten Thousand Men in Fresno on Friday at noon. And so try to bring awareness to mentors to help boys in the Central Valley. There's about a hundred and forty boys that are on, waiting with us to have mentors. So try to bring awareness to that to get people to donate four hours a month, uh, to help out those in need. So with that, we'll move on now to staff updates and reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We actually have a staff update before I do mine from, um, Community Development, Alex Hernandez.
Morning, Alex.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Alex Hernandez, Deputy Community Development Director. As you're aware, our general plan update's in full swing now. Uh, just kind of wanted to keep you and the community updated on, on our events. So tomorrow, Wednesday, October fifteenth, is our first G-PAC meeting. That's going to be held in the Ag Multipurpose Room at one thirty. October twenty-ninth, at four thirty, we have our first community meeting in Home Garden. That's going to be at the Home Garden Community Park. And then the following Wednesday, November fifth, at six P M., we have our Armona Community Meeting in the Armona Community Library. So again, just wanted to keep you guys updated of our events and, um, our efforts to make this a really great general plan. Thank you.
How many, how many meetings we have total when it's all done?
So G-PAC meetings, uh, we're going to have roughly seven or eight G-PAC meetings. Uh, community meetings, we're going to hit each community twice. So March and, excuse me, February and March, we're planning Stratford and Kettleman City. And then again, we will try to work out with their, um, I guess, uh, what they would like to see in the community, and then take it back to the community again for consideration. So we want to hit each community at least twice.
Very good. Thank you.
Of course. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we received correspondence from the mayor of the city of Avonel requesting for the item for, um, the agreement for fire services in Avonel to be moved forward. They requested October seventeenth, however, I believe they meant October twenty-first, which is next Tuesday. So I just wanted to bring that to your board's attention under, um, board correspondence.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Supervisor Val will be back on that day, so in this week, we don't want to do something without him being here.
So the board received the September twenty, twenty-five monthly Kings County Investment Pool Transaction Activity Report from the Finance Director dated October sixth. The board received a proclamation emergency program against the glassy-winged sharpshooter for the area of Hanford from the California Department of Food and Ag on October fourteenth. For upcoming events, Kings County, in partnership with the E D C, will host the twenty-twenty-five City of the County Event this Thursday, October sixteenth, from eleven to one thirty at the Tatchy. Tickets for the event have been sold out, but if you bought a ticket, remember to arrive at eleven A M. for the pre-reception. The Kings County Fire Department, O E S, invites you to the, this year's public safety event on Thursday, October twenty-third, uh, from five to seven P M. at the Kettleman City Park. This event is free. Also, right before this event, at four P M., we will be having the A T and T broadband groundbreaking ceremony at the Kettleman City Park as well. We will have an additional groundbreaking ceremony for the, um, Hanford Branch Library on Wednesday, October twenty-ninth at ten A M., and Lamoore Branch Library on Thursday, October thirtieth at ten A M. Both groundbreaking ceremonies will take place outside in front of each library entrance. For upcoming agenda items, the following agenda items are for October twenty-first. Administration has three, a Senate Bill eighty-one, uh, Juvenile Center Remodel Project Agreement with the State, Grand Jury Meeting Stipend, a study session on Master Fee Service, uh, sorry, Master Fee Schedule Update. Um, Ag has two items on some service agreements for the treatment with Clark Pest Control, a study session on the twenty-twenty-four Ag Crop Report. Health has two items on the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six maternal-child adolescent health agreement funding application, and advanced step higher. H R continues their county service award presentation, and Public Works has an item for the approval plans of spec, uh, specs for the Dana Circle Drive Extension. And Sheriff, uh, has two items, the purchase of some items for the sheriff office airplane, and, um, some items for the jail medical services. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Uh, do we have a report? Do we have a report or announcement for Island District broadband groundbreaking podcast?
Yes, it's tentatively scheduled for, I believe, the Tuesday 28th in Lamoore.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think it's been confirmed.
Yeah, it's not on my calendar. I know we talked about it, but it's been a moving target the whole time.
Eight, three, you still don't have a location either, do you?
Correct. It's, it's still TB to TB to TB.
Not 100% sure.
I talked to the school. I know we want to make sure, I think we, the fire station, that's a public area. And then not to interfere with their school getting out at 3, 2:50.
Exactly. It's going to be a mess.
Yeah. So we do it like after 3:00. It can be fine. 3:30. Okay, we'll move on now to closed session as outlined by our counsel, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One, Government Code Section 54956.9D1 Conference of Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. Name of case, Freddie Quayre v. County of Kings, U.S. District Court, Case Number 120CV01793JLTSKO. Two, Government Code Section 54956.9D1 Conference of Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. Name of case, Carla Bede v. County of Kings, U.S. District Court, Case Number 120CV00644KESSKO. And we're pulling the third item and I'll turn it back to the chair for any public comment.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on that item? Closed session. If none, we'll move on now to adjournment and we'll be back here next Tuesday, October 21st, 2025 at 9:00 AM. And we also have a, today we have a community housing meeting at 11:00 AM. At 1:00 o'clock, we have Mid-Kings Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting. Thank you.